There's no votes after the executive session. Thank you for your attendance tonight. I would like to welcome everyone to the Darlington City Council Agenda for Regular City Council Meeting. Today is March the 2nd, 2021. Mr. Millen, if you'd set a prayer for us.
Let's bow our heads. By the God, we give you thanks for this day and the blessings that you have provided to us. As we as council come now to deal with those issues that will affect the citizens of this community, we ask your blessings upon us and upon them, that you may give us divine wisdom as we deal with these issues, that we may reach the results that will be for the good of each of our citizens, pleasing in your side, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm ready to stand with ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, uh, for the approval of minutes for the city council meeting on 2/2/21.
I make the motion that we approve the minutes of the city council meeting from February 2nd, 2021.
Thank you, lady. Second.
I'll make a special question.
Thank you, Mr. Millen. All available, Mr. Nettles?
Aye.
Mrs. Backus?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant? Mr. Seagars? Okay, aye. Mr. Currie, thank you. Uh, do I have approval of tonight's, uh, for motion for meeting, approval of the meeting for agenda for tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda for the city council meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021.
Mr. Millen, you have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Flane? Mr. Nettles?
Aye.
Mr. Backus?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant? Okay, Mr. Seagars?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Currie. All right, uh, report of standing committees, the Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, Mrs. Rock?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Come out this Saturday to help choose the best chili in town as the DDRA partners with Joe's Grill for its annual chili championship and car show from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 306 Russell Street. Cook teams are still being accepted, and the proceeds from this event will go to the fire department. Facing Risk Fans can be purchased that morning at Joe's Grill for $5, and the people will choose the champion. The DDRA will also present its 2020 Member of the Year Award during the Chamber's annual banquet on March 18th at 7:00 o'clock at the Ground Old Post Office. We also invite teams to participate in our annual DDRA golf tournament on Wednesday, April 14th, at Darlington Country Club. The four-man Captain's Choice Tournament includes delicious lunch, beverages, and a wonderful afternoon of golf. Thank you especially to Carolina Bank, Darlington Raceway, Nationwide Insurance, Fitness World Gyms, and Marlboro P.D. Electric for their support that makes this event possible. We are still accepting golf teams, poll sponsors, and goodie bag donations for this day on the golf course. The DDRA continues its monthly member breakfasts at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, March 25th, at Tocky's Diner. The meals are at no charge for members and a small $5 fee to go towards the meal for all others. The events allow our businesses to connect and strengthen our local economy, because if we can support each other, uh, we may be the only people who will support each other. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. Our alert reaches more than 2,700 people. We continually update our webpage, buildupdarlington.org, where individuals can submit information or sign up to receive these alerts. We welcome our newest members, American Legion Post 13 and R.A. Goodson Construction Company Incorporated. Thank you for your support of our community. DDRA membership is open to businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches. Members can give us a call, 843-992-1561, or send us an email to info@buildupdarlington.org. We can feature your news, your employee recognition, your sales, new products, special hours, and events for people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers using our text and email news alert system. Any questions?
What's that address for Russell Street, the Chili's cook-off?
306.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Chamber, Credit Darlington Chamber of Commerce. Matthew, let's go tell Mrs. Paul's place tonight.
Right here.
You can just stand there, or...
You don't have to speak. Oh, great, great, awesome. Draw me a picture. Okay, uh, I'm obviously not Carl Ellington. Carl is under the weather, so I'm here for the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, I'll make it brief, but as a reminder, chambers of commerce exist to promote business and the welfare of the community. So that's our mission. We're a membership organization, um, and the membership funds much of our endeavors. However, we have lots of events that add to that. Um, now recently, we have the new director, we've added some new members, we've had a couple of, uh, business, we've had a couple of ribbon cuttings, we had, um, Sassy Antique, which is on Pearl Street, we've got Petey Treasures coming up. Uh, we had a successful business after hours on February 5th that I think some of you all attended, which was great, appreciate you being there. And, um, our next event is our annual membership banquet where we, uh, award businesses and individuals, uh, awards. We hope you'll be there, March 18th at the post office, you'll hear more about it. Uh, there are applications for nominating individuals and businesses. So if you want to know more about that, we'd love to, to get your input. And finally, big, big announcement, um, our big event Freedom Fest is gonna go on this year. We had originally scheduled it for, uh, July 3rd, and we're having to reschedule it to the previous Saturday, June 26th, due to the rides and vendors, uh, already being obligated for the 3rd. Uh, we've talked to the police chief, he thinks that's even better, so we're thrilled about that. Um, and the location will be in the downtown area with fireworks at the empty lot owned by the mayor and some of his investors at Russell and Broad Street. Um, we do appreciate the city's support of that event, which, y'all have done that for years. We appreciate it, we're, um, coming to you with that request again. We would like to ask for the same amount that has been granted in years past, 15,000. Um, as we did last year, we will provide invoices for, uh, any funds that the city grants us, so that the city knows exactly where that money is going. And this year, the rides will cost approximately 15,000. So, uh, we ask that you consider that request, and we look forward to any conversation, discussion about that. I'm happy to take questions, uh, hear comments.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, we hope to see you there, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, citizens wishing to appear before council, or anything, please.
We did not receive any emails or letters.
Thank you. All right, uh, on the unfinished business, uh, public hearing ordinance 2021-02, annexation lots Young slash Wyndham Streets. Is there any, um, public, any comments for that?
Uh, we did not receive any letters or emails about that, um, annexation request.
Okay. Call that a, how is this, file approved?
Yes, sir.
Then you just move on to second reading, yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, uh, second reading, ordinance 2021-02, annexation lots Young slash Wyndham Streets. Any discussion?
Just a reminder, these are four lots, uh, at the corner of Wyndham and Young Street, and, um, they are building some new houses on that property.
Is it total of four houses or three?
Uh, they've got three right now, but they've got four lots, so they just, they've been having trouble getting building supplies with COVID and everything, so... But they, the plan is to have a fourth house on that fourth property.
Do you have a motion to approve this?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2021-02, which is the annexation of the four lots on Young and Wyndham Streets sitting there in that corner.
Second. Uh, Mr. Nettles?
Aye.
Mr. Backus?
Aye.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Currie?
Well, let me amend my motion slightly, to give the tax map numbers that are identified, the request that was submitted to us, I think those are 164-05-02-038, same prefixes, -098, same prefixes, -089, same prefixes, -097.
Thank you, motion carries? All right. First reading ordinance, 2021-04, zoning lots Young slash Wyndham Streets, uh, for R8.
Yes, Mayor, so, um, the planning commission met, uh, via Zoom last month and recommended a zoning designation for these properties of R8, which is medium-density residential, um, based on the lot size and, and, uh, the, of the size of the parcels that are currently in that area.
What is it now? How is it zoned now?
It, it's not zoned, because it's in the county.
Oh.
So, um, we have to make a designation, uh, but based on the size of the, the width of those lots in that neighborhood, they're all mostly in that same size as R ordinance would say is an R8. And that is the planning commission's recommendation.
Any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the first reading ordinance of 2021-04, zoning lots Young and Wyndham Streets to R8.
My second motion.
And ladies, just so we are sure, um, it would be those same tax map numbers that were included with the previous motion to, um, annex the property.
Mr. Nettles?
Aye.
Mr. Millen? Mr. Bryant? Okay. Mr. Seagars, thank you. All right, aye. This is motion, Currie, for first reading ordinance, 2021-04, zoning lots Young, Wyndham Streets to R8, which were tax map numbers 164-05-02-038, along with 098, 089, and 097. All the same prefixes and other foots. Thank you. All right, new business, uh, LED outdoor lighting update, South Main Street, Howard?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, two lights were installed, new LED lights, near the main food line entrance. That's a right-hand, uh, look when you come, uh, going towards Florence before you get to the second stoplight. Some of you may have already seen it, some of you haven't, but it's about twice as bright as the other lights that we have on South Main Street. Um, I've been pleased with what I saw, and I wanted to get other council members' opinions on it. If you've seen it already, uh, if you, uh, haven't, I urge you to go by and look, and if it's all right, we'll go ahead and, and put those lights in every commercial area that we have in town. That's the idea, Pearl Street, North Main Street, South Main Street, uh, wherever we have commercial area, we extend it out, Pearl Street Extension, so we have, uh, better pedestrian safety, and, uh, it would light up, uh, give us much more, uh, visibility at night. Has everyone seen them?
No.
I, I haven't, but I'm checking out the number.
I'm getting on camera.
I'm sure I'll probably sit down.
I've got to check, yeah, I would like to see them. It, it's a big difference.
Okay. All right, I'll go by then tonight.
We also discussed Russell Street and, um, what, Wyandotte? When this was brought, I know I had a private conversation with you, but I still would like to make it public that I would like to look into those two locations as well.
Russell and Country Club, was it?
That's right.
What?
Might as well, ma'am.
No, I, I, I'm not hearing you.
Yeah, there's, it's really dark at the hill in Country, uh, Wyandotte, um, in the Country Club, there's a hill where the lights, whenever you're coming down, it have you where you can, your lights are staring, staring at the sky, and people can be walking below, it's a real dangerous area. Same thing with, um, Siskron, I guess we'll just call it the corner of Siskron and Russell, is that fair? It's just as dark, right where our playground is and that area.
We'll order, order those lights or lighting studies for those areas. If there's no lights there, they'll have to do a lighting study, if there is a current light there, we'll light it up.
And since we haven't done that, I guess I'll add one more order to that list, um, the road that Mamma Mia's on, what's that called?
Ward Street.
Ward Street, should we please do a lighting study for there for decorative lighting to match the square?
That would take a little bit longer, but yes, yeah. Okay. So is everybody fine with, uh, changing the current commercial lighting app to the new lighting?
I apologize.
And Jordan Street, the one situated in Jordan is really dark.
Jordan?
That they're complaining about. So can you have a look?
While we're talking about lighting, I think I sent Alex, uh, how many the other night, probably about 10 or 12 lights around, he's, has, uh, got the DOT, they're out, a lot of them through all the areas, I tried to run around the other night and checked a lot of them. Um, so those were being updated, and as far as being, being lit, a lot of them are going off, I don't know, they're all the way, all the way off. All right, so do we need to vote on that?
Okay, no, I, I can't vote, I have, I, I need to work out it first.
You need to look at one of the lights?
Yeah.
Would you like to see a picture of it?
No, I mean, I think you're gonna do any good with the nighttime situation unless you got a little fancy camera.
You got fancy camera?
I'll just stay and vote if everybody... Who has seen it? Who, who's seen it? Anybody? Has anyone seen the new lighting? There's one hand. Anybody else in council seen it? Mayor? Anybody else? I think we need to see the lights before we vote. I agree, sir. Thank you for that stupid, sir, observation.
All right, so if you can look at it before next time, we'll vote on it next time then. Everybody know where they're at, correct? All right. Decorative lighting, Pearl Street between Dargon and Sycamore Streets, Howard?
Uh, this is something that came as a request to us from, uh, Todd Hardees, who's the owner of the, uh, old post office, the Grand Old Post Office. He was requesting, um, similar lighting, which we have on the square, also on, uh, South Main Street, North Main Street, and, uh, the first block of Pearl, he'd like to see some decorative lights in between Sycamore and, um, Dargon Streets. So we gotta put in a, we had, put in a request in December for, um, Duke Energy to come out and, and have a look and give an estimate on what the cost could be. Our cost, uh, the cost altogether is $25,000 to put in the decorative lamps, that's just the Duke Energy cost for putting in the lamps. Half of that, they would cover under a credit that they, which they give municipalities. They take a half a percent of our municipal fee and set it aside for lighting improvements. So we wanted to do that, out of the 25 to 22, they would pay half of that amount. But what this doesn't cover is, it doesn't cover the, uh, traffic signals, which would have to be moved and, uh, relocated. Also, we'd have to dig up the sidewalk, and conduit would have to be replaced. We'd also have to, um, put the sidewalk back the way it was, so those costs are not added into this estimate from Duke Energy. So what you have there is just the cost to put in the lights. And after that, the cost would be roughly $20 a month for 20 years for the decorative lamps. They'd be exactly the same lamps that we have on the other areas that I mentioned, the square, and also Pearl Street, where there's the black concrete poles and the white finials with the acorn on top. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. Uh, what we're asking for tonight is permission to go ahead and move forward with this, to bring you back all the, all the estimates and, and involved with this. Also, says councilman Gardner asked tonight, if we look at Ward Street, we'd have to go through the same process there. Ward Street wouldn't cost as much, there's no sidewalks there, but still, we'd have to tear up, um, some of the street and put it back the way it was, um, also that street.
And the, uh, money for the, uh, you said, there's, there's money actually allotted?
By Duke, yes.
I mean, that we had, we have a certain amount of money that's allotted for underground lighting?
The Duke will give us, they will give us half of that, 25,000, 25,222.62, they'll give us half of that amount to go towards, uh, putting up of those, of those lamps, yes, sir.
I'm saying, but do we currently have money earmarked for underground lighting?
No, we do not.
So how many lights would this be?
This would be, uh, we're looking at either three or four lights that would go on that block.
Okay. So this is different than what we put in, put on South Main Street?
Yes, ma'am, this is, this is similar to the, the decorative lighting that we have on the square and on the first block of Pearl Street, which is the black concrete poles with the acorn lights and the finials on top.
Oh. So you wanna go down another block?
He's wishing to extend that another block. We also had conversations with the county last year of doing that block of North Main Street where the library is located, where they're gonna put the new judicial center, but after they backed out of, uh, purchasing or leasing the Carnegie Library, we stopped talking about that.
But that anticipated my question, I mean, how did that particular block, why is that one selected? I mean, I would see as a supposed to going...
Todd Hardy asked, did we consider this, that's why I was bringing it to you tonight. He, he asked for us to get this quote, and that's what we did.
Oh, okay, I mean...
It's simply a continuation of the lighting out of another block in one direction.
So, this, okay, from the square to the library, to the library, that way, that you saying that they voted not to do this?
No, ma'am, they just, we were discussing with them as long as they were gonna get the, the Carnegie Library, but then they backed out of that, and they purchased the Wells Fargo building there.
Okay. I got you, I'm just, you know, if you're gonna decorate it, they need to be kind of consistent all around. Uh, this, one of the areas, I'm just trying to see how we're thinking here and how we're coming about it, so I can get into that.
So roughly this, this is...
I can see what to do with it.
Spending approximately 30,000 for three or four lights?
Well, it would, it would be half of 25,000, which is, uh, you're up to $12,600 for those lights, plus whatever DOT deems the cost of replacing the, replacing the traffic signals and the cost of tearing up the sidewalks and putting the sidewalks back. Correct. And you tell it...
25,000?
Nope, oh, that's probably gonna be, I would guess, 100, north of 100,000. That's, but that's...
Say that, I like, for, for $25,000.
Lot of money. For three lights.
It is a lot of money, but we won't, however, to have Howard get the information, it would be necessary whether we spend the money or not. I guess that's what you're asking.
Yeah, we're just, that's what we're guessing right now, we don't know what's come through, he's asking right now, do you want him, can he go ahead and pursue?
Go ahead and pursue.
Should we? Do it, it comes back in its 20,000 or 10,000 or 100,000 or that?
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
All right.
So is everybody okay with, um, do we need to develop that, or just...
Yes.
Do we have a vote, develop a motion to approve for Howard to, uh, pursue pricing on decorative lighting for Pearl Street between Dargon and Sycamore Streets? Would you like to have him add the price to go on down to the Carnegie Library? Or can we do that, or just leave it like this?
I think I could go ahead and do that, and then just do like A or B, like two separate things, so we know.
And where we're getting the price?
Well, I'm asking for Ward Street, I can ask for the Carnegie Library also. And I can check with the county and see if they're willing to, to vary some of the cost with that block.
Right.
And just have them separate it.
And get us, in addition to the lighting costs, the, the true cost for the traffic lighting and the sidewalk cost.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll let one of y'all come up with that one.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make that motion that I think has been jointly contributed to by everybody.
Okay, I have a second, Howard? Ms. Backus? Mr. Reed? Mr. Bryant?
Good morning.
All right. Uh, we have a motion approved, to be clear, we have a motion approved for Howard to move forward with getting pricing for decorative lighting for Pearl Street between Dargon and Sycamore Streets, along with Ward Street, along with, from the square to the Carnegie Library, along with sidewalk construction and all repairs.
Put on this Russell.
Okay?
Put on this Russell.
This is, uh, just, because they're specifically just like a placement, this is about the decorative lamps, yes, for Ward Street. You were talking with, uh, Ward.
Okay, are we good? All right, uh, new business, C granting 10-foot easement ownership to Todd Hardy?
Uh, Mayor, um, and, uh, I believe this is what Lisa and I talked, Lisa, uh, Ms. Rock and I talked about today. I think we have an accurate tax map ID now, and so I think we can do a title search, and I think it'll be a week or two, we probably have that to actually know who owns that, um, piece of land. So if that's a, uh, if it affects our decision going forward, we should add information a week or two on that piece of land right there, that piece of property.
And clarity, it's, it's obviously the green area behind the old post office, is it also the green area behind the taxi service? Is he wanting both of those, or just...
Yeah, he's, uh, he's purchasing the taxi, uh, the, the trading post, not taxi. He's purchasing the two buildings at the corner of, um, Grove, Grove Street and Pearl Street, the old trading post. He's purchasing those two buildings, which go back, uh, to the back where the other green strip is he has located there, which is, uh, another dead area.
So he's wanting the green spot behind, in between Grove and Dargon, and he's wanting the green spot between Dargon and Sycamore. Correct? Two different spots?
Correct.
All right, I'll say it so I know what you're talking about, but this, this, it seems like this is a blanket granting, I don't know where he's talking about. Granting 10 feet easement. So where, is this, is this it, or this was for the lighting?
I think it's better that we go ahead and have somebody map it and discuss it afterward, we can, we can kind of guess it right now, but until we...
And so we own that? That's what I'm saying.
He didn't say we're to be quoted. We don't know, we don't, we're not sure if we, if we own it or how much we own it.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I don't see how we can grant something, we're not sure whether that's ours.
Well, we're not asking for you to grant it until we find out if we, if we're discussing...
But that's what you got on here, uh, Mayor, you got granting and be easement ownership.
I don't get that, I'm asking you to... Motion that we carry over H.C. until the next meeting to find out whether or not we do them, and let Kevin make that determination, and he can also look at the issue lane that's come up as to whether or not we are free to give away city-owned property, or what's the best way, even if we just do a nominal amount?
We, we had a...
Pardon you, Judge, but I don't know that we can, I don't know there's such thing as motioning to carry anything over, we can either table it, or we can take it for information, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, I mean, jeez, all I'm saying is that...
I make a motion, we table it.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. Very good.
All right. Do we have a second, Mr. Mayor? No, should I table it? All in favor of table? All right, thank you. Discussing on next one, it's Mr., um... You're ready?
Kevin. That word.
Kevin, uh, brings it back to us on the exact, uh, tax map numbers, all right? Kind of brain-dead moment there for a minute, Kevin.
I do call it worse.
All right. New business, advertising on C vehicles.
And Mayor, on this one as well, um, I've been talking to Lisa, I did some research, and I talk to municipal association. There's nothing that I can see... There's nothing that I can see that I can talk to them that would prevent this from going forward, if this is what y'all want.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Um, in your, uh, what was on your desk when you got here, there are these two pages. They're just slightly different, um, charges, uh, but to give you an idea, we've got six trucks in the street department that we can do this sort of advertisement on the vehicle. They're larger vehicles, they've got big spots where you can put a logo or some sort of message. And I'm estimating here that eight-foot size, ten-foot on the cherry picker and eight-foot on the street sweeper. And beside that, uh, you can see the red block is basically the auto expense from the sanitation department for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, which was sixty-eight thousand dollars. So that's how much we spent in gas and whatnot, uh, running these equipment. Now, given the pricing structure that I've put down below, uh, obviously giving people, uh, more expensive if they just want to do it just one time, one month, and a cheaper rate if they pay for the twelve months upfront or the six months upfront. The yellow would be the minimum amount of revenue, so that is if every truck has something on it and it's all the twelve-month contract. So the minimum amount with this first pricing schedule is fifty-five thousand, which is, covers most of our auto expense for that, that department. The maximum amount, if we're having to change it more often, um, if every month you have somebody that's putting a new logo on it, you know, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, um, and just doing it at those one-month increments, obviously you make a lot more money, because you don't really want to have to change it as often. You want to incentivize having it just one time, uh, not having to change it often. But this is just one possibility, um, and what you would end up getting. Now, may I can adjust this however you like?
Uh, Lisa, the way I was, because this was my reason I did, the way I was interpreting and thinking was, if I want to put a sign, straight up to the folks to put a sign, or whoever wants to put a sign on the side of any of these trucks, if I put a billboard sign up like I have on the property on Fifty-Two Highway, um, I just put one up and I had to buy the billboard material, and then I had to pay for it to be put up. And then once it got up, within a month, I didn't like it because it didn't look the way I chose for it to look. So I bought another one, I paid for another one to be put up at my expense, uh, and still, all the time, paid the monthly fee for that sign to be up. So the same issue here, at no cost to the city, it should be that, um, whatever truck is up there, if we pick one, if I pick one of these big trucks for my business and I said, oh, I want a ten-foot sign up there, and I put it up there and I want it up there for a month, I would pay whatever fee, for that, and then I would pay for it to be put up there, pay for the material, and then if a month later it's taken down, then the next person would have, if I want to change it or else they continuously pay. They're paying for that, they're paying for that spot for that, take a month, but they also have to pay whatever the cost is to put it up there. So therefore, the city has no cost in this at all.
So this would be, your charge, you're saying, would be this amount plus cost?
Whatever you decide or what you think.
I mean, I'm just throwing some numbers out there so you have some, some idea.
Whatever number we come up with, or you come up with, if council comes up, whether whoever has, is responsible for coming up with a fee for the price per month on that particular truck, uh, I would suggest that, um, so that, so that there is no cost to the city. The city is just pure win. Uh, when you go to the person and say, to a restaurant, they go put their side of the name on the side of the truck, if they choose to leave it up there for a year, then they don't have to change that banner for one time. If they continue to leave, sign the lease again next year, and the banner's still good, they don't have to buy them the banner, the banner's still up there. I had a, again, I had a banner up on the billboard sign for almost three years, um, before I had to change the banner, and I just let that same banner do it. So I didn't have any additional cost, but I just still paid my monthly fee.
This is essentially just the monthly fee that you discussed?
And I, I would say just, you know, when you go to, whoever's going out to advertise it to the people, just say, now, if this, whatever price you come up with for us, this is what, whoever you put it on, puts it on the side of the truck, this is what's the cost to have it on there. So then incentive would be, you know, just like with my billboard sign, I wouldn't want to live, I didn't want to change that billboard sign every month because I got paid for new, I got paid, they got to put it up every time, and I also got to buy a banner every time. So, you know, unless I want to incur that cost constantly, typically, something of this nature, they would leave up for six months or a year on the side of the truck. But if they took it down more, then you would just have, they would incur the cost of the city. But again, the, the purpose of this is to bring more revenue into the city for these trucks going around, make it look professionally done, and, um, yeah, it would be at no cost to the city. Yes, sir, Ms. Brown?
Mayor, the advertising, you know more than I do, but in a situation like with the city trucks, a new restaurant comes in, they want to advertise on city trucks, they hire somebody and they, um, pay for it to take place. But unfortunately, they do it for a year, but six months later, they go bankrupt, so they got it for a year. But they're not going to be around at the end of the year to begin the next cycle. Do we need to build something into the pricing structure to cover the cost of taking the current banner? It may no longer be applicable all for our vehicles, or how do we need to do that just so that we're sure that if it could be an all-net for the city, we don't incur any expense? I just don't know.
Right. So if I put it up, if I put it up, and I sign a twelve-month agreement, um, again, you can decide, would they pay that? I would say pay the twelve months up, if they pay the twelve months upfront, or they pay, pay it per month. Uh, if you do it about a month and they don't pay for it after six months and they go bankrupt, um, then at the next point, you say, well, we're good. The next person to put it on there, then he's going to incur the cost of putting it on there.
I'm just wondering whether, we may end up giving some free advertising if there's an overlap from the person who's done or knew their contract.
Right. And it's the same thing with my billboard signs that I, I put out there, if I say take it down, sometimes, uh, I say take it down March thirty-first, but sometimes I leave it up fifteen days. I get fifteen days of free advertising because then you have, then you have a person in the middle, um, to fill it, then you get a person out there, so I got a few extra days or a month of free advertising. But the, the goal would be to go ahead and have somebody lined up for the next person to go and play.
I'm assuming that it would not be terribly expensive if we had to take it off?
No. It's what I'm saying, whatever you put on there would be, would be permanent, would be designed to where you have to take it off, put it on like that.
And it's just not pull a sticker off?
Yeah, yeah. And again, like on the side of a picker truck, you can't put a sticker on it, but you got to put a corrugated top board on there. So once that corrugated board is wrapped, and the next person takes it off, and you say they corrugated board off, which is, which would be included in it, like buying a banner, they would just put a new corrugated board up and that, that banner would go on the side of the van, on the side of the truck. So the bank, the business went out, uh, went bankrupt, you just, I'll make it just for take your stuff off. All right. So is everybody okay with pursuing toward this picture? Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
I'll listen to it.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Banks?
So who's going to put them, who, what company is going to be used to put this on the truck?
We would have to bid it out, I would say, just like any other time. And all your different shipping companies that are available to bid, have them if they want to do it, they could do it, not, uh, free bids.
I guess, yeah, one last question. Who approved advertising, Lisa Rock or Howard Garble? Or who?
My thoughts were Lisa approved.
I would think Lisa, Lisa's more of a graphic, she's a graphic arts designer, so the look, it's the look of something.
So you're going to do some kind of Google research work on these advertising, these companies that are going to be advertising on city vehicles so that we don't get ourselves in some kind of PR issue?
Oh, yeah, and I'm sure that they probably should too, um, just because I'm not sure what, there's probably certain businesses that probably don't want to be on the side of the garbage truck.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just frankly.
Would I like to make a motion to, um, accept the advertising on city vehicles? Seconded.
Ms. Banks? Ms. Melon? Okay, Ms. Elaine, please.
Yes, dear.
Ms. Segers, my sample, thank you. My pleasure, Mrs. Carey, for Lisa to pursue with advertising on, uh, the six vehicles, uh, for the city owns for truck one and truck six.
So, uh, would it be a conflict of interest if I want to advertise on any city truck?
I don't think so.
Sure. Selection.
Not for a lame reason. Or for a lame reason, I'll play the better. Yes, sir. We don't ask for discount. You can throw it on my mobile six of them.
They didn't want it, right?
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, um, new business, commercial garbage bid advertisement? Alex King?
Come on, Alex.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman Y'all doing this evening?
Good. Are you okay with taking your mask off and speaking?
I can. Be fine with me.
Yeah, we can hear you better than everybody on video can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Um, last month, first of last month, I was meeting with Republic Services. I started talking to them a few months ago about getting pricing on residential garbage, just to kind of see what it would cost if we wanted to do residential garbage contracted out. So anyway, um, they came to my office and we met, and he said, well, we got some bad news, good news, what is it? So they told me kind of what it would cost if they did a residential, but he said, the bad news is we're going to have to go up on commercial, on the dumpsters that we have. I said, go up? And he said, yeah. I said, how much? And he said, well, we're going to have to pretty much double our rates. He said, we're underwater with the rates that we currently have. I said, we can't do that. And he said, we just went up on rates ourselves, we just did a rate increase on the commercial side. I said, if you double the rates, we're going to be going in the hole. I said, we can't do it. He said, well, if you'll let us take the residential, we could do it over a three-year period. Still wouldn't work, um, we'd still be going in the hole. So I talked to Howard and I said, hey, um, what do you think about us putting it out for bids? And seeing what some other companies would charge. He said, that's fine. So what we did was we got a, dug up an old, um, bid packet, revised it, you know, brought it up to date, and, um, we said, we put that out for bids, and I looked and put it out to six different companies, with Republic being one of them. In the meantime, I started thinking, I said, well, if they're making money doing it, why can't we make money doing it? What, what would it cost us to do it in-house? So I started running numbers on that as well to figure out. So whenever we get the bids back, um, if the bids come back and they're all in line with where Republic says they're going to have to be, then, um, we're going to have to step back and pump and figure out what we're going to do, because we're going to be going in the hole on commercial garbage. So anyway, I started putting numbers together, and I haven't published these yet. I've been trying to get some budgets together, but Howard told me to just put it all out there, so that's what I'm going to do. I started talking, I talked to... Yeah, March twelfth is when we're doing the bid opening, so we haven't done anything on the bid yet. But anyway, um, I started doing some budget numbers for the commercial dumpster side if we decided to do it in-house. I talked to Ryan Amick, was who, we buy some equipment from him, um, from him for the city, and trying to get budget numbers on trucks. He said, you know, to, on a brand-new truck, anywhere between two-hundred and fifty, two-hundred and sixty thousand, you could get a nice truck. He said, you would have to have two trucks, because if you've got one, if that one goes down, you still got to service your customers. He said, so you need to have a second truck, which could be a good used truck. He said, budget anywhere between fifty, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. So I put two-hundred and fifty thousand in for a primary, I mean, two-hundred and seventy-five thousand in for a primary truck, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in for a secondary truck, and then I put a hundred and sixty-five thousand in for dumpsters. I've got two bids in for dumpsters, um, so, and those bids came anywhere between a hundred and forty-five thousand and a hundred and, basically, eighty thousand. So, right now, we're bringing in yearly, our annual income for commercials is about three-hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Currently, we're paying Republic about two-hundred and fifty thousand. So if they double the fees, we're going to be paying them five hundred thousand roughly. So we'd be going in the hole, a hundred and, what, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, or so, two-hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars is what we'd be going in the hole. Um, no, excuse me, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, I'm sorry. So, anyway, um, I think, depending on what the, the bids come in at, worst-case scenario, if we did, if we got a bond or whatever to, to do the, I'm thinking about, I'm budgeting about four-hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is what I'm budgeting with the numbers I have now, that's upfront cost, and then you're going to have your annual cost, which is going to be your tipping fees, maintenance on the trucks, a salary for the driver, and, you know, benefits for the driver. So I'm in the process, I've gotten the paperwork to do a, to try to get a grant, I think, for a fifty thousand dollars. Isn't that up to fifty thousand dollars for the new truck? I didn't take that into consideration, but I'm thinking that right now, if we did it on a five-year repayment deal, did a bond for four-hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars with a five-year repayment plan, we would be spending, um, in five years, we would be spending, on the original budget numbers, about two-hundred and fifty thousand a year is what it would cost us to run that program. So, that may be the option that we need to look at going with, but we need to get the bids in to, to see where we're at. I'd say we'll know a little bit more on, um, March the twelfth, when we get those bid packets in, we do the bid opening. So that's something that we're probably going to need to look at in the next month. Our contract, supposedly our contract, and I've got a, a copy of it, it was signed ten years ago with Republic. It expires June the thirtieth. So July the first, we're going to have to do something, or by July the first. I did talk to Republic Services today, uh, because they have a hundred and seventy-nine boxes in the city, and I talked to my contact there, well, actually, I talked to him yesterday, Rob Carter, and I asked him, I said, hey, if we decide to do this in-house, y'all've got a hundred and seventy-nine boxes you've got to pick up. There's a lot of man-hours in picking up a hundred and seventy-nine boxes. Would y'all be willing to sell those boxes to the city? Y'all wouldn't have to pick them up, and we wouldn't have to worry about putting new ones out. He called me back today and said that they were working on getting some numbers together for us on those boxes. He wasn't sure if they would sell them or not, but if they were looking at getting numbers together, then apparently they have some interest in selling those boxes. That would be our biggest hurdle, because we can't have a lapse in service for customers. So we've got to figure out how are we going to get the boxes, get them in-house, how are we going to put them out, and, you know, in a timely manner so that our customers don't have a lapse in service. So if they would sell us the boxes that they currently have in the city...
That wouldn't be a difference.
Then that would help us out tremendously. It would give them a little revenue out of the, out of the deal, and it would also help us out tremendously so we don't have to worry about trying to put a bunch of boxes out. Because we don't have a truck, I mean, they make a truck specifically for that, but to put out a hundred and seventy-nine boxes one time, we wouldn't need to do it. Now, we, we might could look at renting one, um, and we could do that, that could be an option, or I've looked at a couple of other things that we could do. Hopefully, Republic will agree to sell us the boxes, and then we won't have to go that route if we decide to do it in-house, so.
So Alex, which, which is the quickest way to go if we get bids back and we have something that's comparable to what they're going to go up to versus what if we do it ourselves? Which one can we put in place more quickly since we have such a turn, short-term time?
Well, I talked to the box manufacturers, and they can have boxes to us. One of them said he could have them, a lot of them he has in stock already. Um, he said he could have the bulk of our boxes on-site probably in, in three to four weeks. Now, we get, we do the bid opening March twelfth. Now, we get, we do the bid opening March 12th. Then April meeting will be, we'll need to make a decision. If they decide that night that we want to do it in-house, then we could go ahead and move the ball forward. And I would say by the end of May, first of June, we should have the boxes in, you know, on hand.
So when you did the bids out, you specified a certain date that they had, if they were granted the bid, that they had to be in place and serviced?
Yeah. So, um, and that's gonna, whether we do it or whether somebody else does, it's gonna be, I mean, that's gonna be a major undertaking to try to change out a hundred and seventy-nine boxes.
Well, we ask you this, it would be a lot better to purchase the boxes we have, I agree with you on that, if they'll give us a decent rate on those. But if you purchase the boxes brand-new, okay, they have to deliver them to you, correct?
Yeah, they bring them to us.
They deliver them all, they make delivery ten on a trailer, but could they not possibly deliver them in spots they deliver, and they drop them?
They're, they don't own a trucking line that delivers them, they contract that out. That trucking line's probably gonna bring them to our warehouse or to our, our shop and drop them there.
You're gonna have to have somebody unload them.
I mean, we might could do a.
You probably have to have somebody unload them too. At your shop. Take them off the flatbed.
Yeah, we can get them off the flatbed. I mean, we can move them with our, with the backup, that's not a problem, to set them off. Then you got, you know, a hundred and seventy-nine boxes sitting on the yard that we got to start moving. So I mean, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a chore to, to make the transition, but I mean, I don't know that we're gonna have very many options.
So if someone, uh, give a fantastic bid and we accept, accept the company, accept one of the bids, then what then happens to the boxes that are there? Would that company, would Republic still want to?
That would be left up to that company. I mean, if they came in and said, hey, they may have the same idea that we have. Instead of us trying to purchase a hundred and seventy-nine boxes and get them moved, hey, maybe they can buy them from Republic. I don't know if Republic would sell them to them, I don't know. I mean, that's.
But they will sell, sell them to us.
Seems like they will because they're working on a price. If they weren't willing to work on a price, then to me, they'd say, we're not interested in selling them. But when he told me that they were working on trying to get us a price, that gives me a little indication that they do have some thoughts of selling us the boxes.
So if they, if they don't sell them to us, what's their term time for picking them up? Because now we have.
They're gonna have them out here by June 30th, I mean, but we can't have a lapse in coverage for the customers.
I'm seeing that, and that's my, my question for dilemma.
And some of the, a lot of the locations wouldn't necessarily be a problem. Because, you know, you've got where the boxes are at, there's a place beside it that you could go and put it beside it, they can pull theirs out, wouldn't be a problem. Where you're gonna really have problems is your restaurants, where they're inside of an enclosed area and there's not enough room for two boxes, you know? So that's gonna be where you're gonna have your biggest challenge. But places, Genesis Healthcare, H and S Floor, places where they have an open area, that's not in a contained area, then, you know, you could take and put one there. If it was the middle of June, you could put one there, just lock it up so that nobody's putting trash in it. And then June 30th, unlock it, start using that when Republic getting theirs out.
So is everybody okay for a discussion with him moving forward and pursuing?
Yeah.
More further details on with Republic to see if they'll sell the trash cans and.
I was hoping to have, have a something today, but when he said he was trying to get the numbers for us, I mean, it'd take a little while to get the number. I'm sure they're wanting to, they're trying to find out what fair market value is on the cans, and that's what he told me. He said, you know, I feel like if we sell them, you know, we would sell them for fair market value minus any depreciation. I mean, a lot of the cans are fairly new. I mean, they, that's one thing I can say, if we buy them, we're not gonna be buying a bunch of junk boxes. Because customers have been good about calling in and saying, hey, I've got holes in the bottom of mine, Republic could come in and change them out. So a lot of our boxes are, most of them are in real good shape, like you, so.
They've given us good service for a number of years also. The complaints we have are few and far between. Most have to do with boxes being too heavy or if they have a breakdown. Tractor spot puts out a lot of things sometimes, a lot of dog food that goes bad and it's really heavy, we can't pick it up, you have to get heavier trucks to come in. But for, for the large part of the last decade, they've been a good vendor to work with.
All right, anybody got any questions?
Just go ahead and, do we need to make a motion for him to proceed forward or just discussion?
June 12th, I'll have the, the bids in and the rest of the lay of work be done other than waiting on prices on boxes from Republic, so. But I'll have something for you next month or before if you are.
Sounds good.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Howard, you want to bring that back up? Did you say you want to bring it back up?
The Chamber, I believe that Carla was gonna ask for fifteen thousand dollars for Freedom Fest tonight, but since she's not here, um, maybe Nancy didn't get the memo about that. But they each year ask us for fifteen thousand dollars to support Freedom Fest. It's been held traditionally at the racetrack, because the brochure is actually held inside the city of Durham. So we may not vote on it tonight, but they'd like some type of affirmation that we're willing to provide that money out of hospitality collection account for that Freedom Fest event, which would be held on the Rennes Square.
I'd like to make a motion, we honor their, their request of supporting fifteen thousand dollars. Give a second.
I can't say anything, I'm on the board, so.
Oh, wait a second.
A second later. Would you like to say it?
Okay, that's fine. Well, somehow, I thought we had already addressed that. I thought we were.
We didn't vote to approve it. So we're asking for a second to approve.
Okay, we voted and approved something that's not even on the agenda?
We did last month with the.
But, but I thought we.
Antifacial Lambert Street or the Lambert. It was not on the agenda.
You know how you, we was making the joke one time, Brian, that we were, we spent fifteen thousand for five, five, five words. I thought we had done that. Yeah, I thought she was coming back, I thought we just.
It was.
But anyway, we had done it.
I thought she used ten thousand as the figure she said. I thought she said she'd be coming back, so.
I think her purpose for saying that. I think her purpose for saying that.
Right, right. Anyway, we was saying.
We've got, we've got a motion on the table for, to approve it.
I would like to, I would like to have a discussion. We had talked a couple of months back about the different organizations coming to us this year and if we're gonna discuss doing less amounts to each of those organizations. I guess that fell through the wayside, but I know our, um, our numbers across the board are down. My suggestion is we can take a hard look at where we're gonna be giving dollars this year as a group and figure out how we want to give them out. But to give out fifteen grand and then everybody else is gonna trickle in the next couple of months before budget year, and I don't know what the total is. My suggestion is not to do a total while we're doing a multi-use complex that's gonna run multi-million, millions of dollars. And also, um, give out hospitality funds at the exact same rate during the middle of the virus. I just don't think that's fiscally responsible.
Okay. All right, we still have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
A late second.
Wait, you seconded it? I never confirmed for sure that you seconded, you made a second motion.
Yes, I did second.
All right. And in all the favor, Mr. Millen?
We are voting to, at this point in time, make the decision as to whether we will or will not.
You need my two.
Approve.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
I have a responsibility as well.
What, what's happened now?
When Mr. Millen decided.
Yeah, I'm, I'm debating, um, as a part of.
Oh.
Have we, if we had.
We still don't have the discussion.
Come back from the Chamber that tells us what kind of revenue that Freedom Fest being handled downtown, um, produced?
Well, we never had Freedom Fest downtown, we had Fright Fest, which was in October.
Yeah.
I guess the crowd there was what, between three and five thousand people, I would guess. It was a healthy crowd given that we had a pandemic going on. Anna Dewitt is the executive, or chairman of the, chairperson of the board, she's here tonight, if you wanted to have her maybe address that.
Anna, excuse me, has, have any projections taken place with what it would be, the revenue the city would pick up from having Freedom Fest held downtown?
Revenue that the city would make? He said revenue.
I'm just thinking about, you know, we're being asked for fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a projection that bringing X number of people into town would result in X amount of money being spent with local businesses that would have a trickle-down effect of producing X, Y, Z for the city based upon revenue that would be spent? I just didn't know whether those projections had been looked at yet.
Well, of course, we will ask all the businesses on the square to be open that Saturday for people to shop local. But I would imagine it would be the same as the Sweet Potato Festival because it would probably be about the same crowd.
Mr. Millen, now, can I speak? Sure. As far as, um, my personal experience, um, I don't think spending fifteen thousand dollars, you're gonna turn around and see the businesses in the Darlington to automatically bring that revenue back into us. To me, the purpose of spending X amount of dollars, whatever it is, on something like that, like the Sweet Potato Festival and Fright Fest and other things like that, is to portray a positive image of our city so that residents from outside, inside the city and people from outside the city sees our town and says, oh, there's, there's something going on over there, it's exciting. Darlington's the place to be and they'll come to Darlington. So for example, when I drive my trucks around with the advertisement on it, rarely does anybody ever walk up and say, I want to join your gym because I saw your truck. But everywhere they say, I see you everywhere. And so I know that the advertisement part works. So to me, stuff like this is, there's no way to really say that exactly what it brought back in, but you're known for having a positive impact in the area, just like Fright Fest was. There was a good positive atmosphere, the kids enjoyed it there, especially during a pandemic. And so the same thing with, with, you know, July 4th, any type of activities we've had at the festival that we do for our town is to bring positive energy to the area, so that's what I would say.
Sweet Potato Festival for years and years got like three hundred, four hundred, three hundred dollars for years and years. I think last year was the first year that they actually asked for any thousands of dollars. I think last year they asked for five thousand dollars. Besides Hardscape Projects, I don't know of any other thing where we're spending such a large dollar as, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. My personal interest is, you know, we got a multi-use complex coming up, we got a lot of expenses, and we got a, um, pandemic coming on right now. My position is that it shouldn't be fifteen thousand dollars.
I will say that we did take measures to clean the bathrooms every thirty minutes. We had, um, cans of spray that we sprayed down. We did, um, monitor the, um, rate of the virus two weeks after Fright Fest and there was no increase in the number of cases that we had in Darlington. There was no increase. I, I, we, we cleaned bathrooms every thirty minutes, we picked up trash, our vendors had, um, hand sanitizer out. We went above and beyond anything that we could think of to make it safe for the people that enjoyed the festival.
Just for clarity, I'm not, I wasn't talking about the cleanliness of the virus, I'm talking about the revenues being down because of the virus.
How much was generated?
How much we generate?
From the Freedom Fest?
No, I think she's asking about hospitality going. Elaine, can you clarify your question?
Yeah, that's fine. We raised this, the only thing that I kind of remember is. It's so many, whenever the other, other organizations was asking for money, it was mentioned that we reduced some of them. But since you, the one that I support most of all is P D R T A, and we gave them what they are. I said, we give them, we'll give the Chamber theirs as well. They do have.
And the Chamber does not expect to make much money off of Freedom Fest this year. But we do this for the people of our community who have somewhere to go, we're gonna have a band, we're gonna have the fireworks and the rides. So our revenue this year, we're not projecting it to be that much, but that's okay with us.
I'm trying to remember the ones that we cut for something like the domestic violence, different ones we did cut, but.
When we did give the fifteen thousand dollars, didn't that include a fee that had to be paid to the racetrack? There is no fee now downtown, so why should it be fifteen thousand dollars?
That's the cost of the rides.
Yeah, ride at the racetrack.
Yes, ma'am, but we, we also had, um, different sponsors that paid for that money for the racetrack too. I mean, the city and the county, we do ask for money, but we also have different sponsors that help make up the balance of the festival because if it was just the city and the county, given, we would not have enough money to put on Freedom Fest.
And don't, I mean, don't take my questions as being against Freedom Fest or against giving you money. If it was in the middle of a coronavirus, then I'm interested in giving the children for rides and giving them the ability to have something in Darlington. It's just, you know, being judicious and fiscally responsible with our offers. And right now, I'm just a little nervous about the fun, nothing personal.
But she did, the, the young lady in her report said that the, the rides themselves was fifteen thousand dollars.
It was fifteen thousand at the racetrack.
Yeah. But it's, you know, different, you know, this is the first time being downtown.
Well, I'm kind of in agreement with Brian, I think fifteen thousand is a little too much. I agree with that. I think that's considerate when other people come to ask for money, we probably won't give them what they asked for in the past years either.
There were several that didn't get.
And I don't think we need to be selling money issue at times, I think we need to look at the list of who we frequently give them to, who comes back year to year and settle it. I mean, it's not even an agenda item, so, but if we want to debate it now, I'm here to debate it. But if I was to do it, I would put every line item together, we've gave money for the last five years for these different organizations and how they want to simplify this year. But.
But since they want to know the agenda, then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for next week and discuss it at the meeting.
Fine, I mean, we can vote tonight if they like.
I'm for it.
We have a first and a second, we'll wait for Mr. Miller.
I have mixed emotions. I think these types of issues, um, can be resolved or made easier on us if we have a policy and we decide as a council we're going to make and budget making X amount of donations and have it as a line item. And then we decide, sort of like hospitality, isn't it the county that has people make application and come before and then?
The county has an actual committee that does that, and I think I suggested that as a work session last year, we set up a committee. A committee possibly of restaurant owners that, uh, would, these people would come and make a presentation to, similar to what the county does. They would make a recommendation, but the council, y'all voted up or down, but that would be everybody collectively together. That's what I discussed last year when we were going through that process.
So where we going, Council?
I might be interested in moving forward in the years in the future, but I would suggest that we take all of them, put them on a list and discuss it. That's my suggestion, but that's the last thing I'll say.
So you, I didn't, you said what?
I would like to make a tabulated list of all the people that we've donated to year to year and discuss it as a group so that we can go through it instead of each time somebody comes up here, we make a different decision for each little group.
Gotcha. Okay.
But I'm one person.
But we still got to decide because they got to know whether to go forward and plan for Freedom Fest tonight. So we either got to decide this month or decide next year whether we're going to do it.
That's all well and good, but Ms. Maxi says she was gonna come back and request and then Councilman Seager's suggesting that we should go ahead and do it now. He's got the vote, I think the mayor can just ask for it, but we can discuss this group later. It's been motion and seconded.
Well. You had a motion, you don't got a second.
I, I can't vote in favor of it tonight, though.
All right. It's too noble to.
The problem with waiting, though, is these other entities, you don't know when they're gonna come forward with their requests.
I wouldn't ask.
A lot of them don't do it until budget time. And the Chamber's gotta know before June whether they can have Freedom Fest.
That's a fair assumption, but I didn't ask to see who was gonna come to us. I said to use the store.
Pass.
Who we gave to.
But they may not request it in a period.
And we'll be even more fortunate.
We should just get the question.
The Chamber was here tonight. She had an opportunity to ask. She didn't ask.
She said she'd come back.
She said she'd come back. She knew they got Freedom Fest in June or whatever it is. She didn't ask. She said she'd come back. I'm assuming next meet.
I suggest we just take this information, move on, but that's just my assumption.
That's how y'all feel this? Yeah. And it's not on the agenda.
Remember, we have a motion and a second. We've either got to have a motion and a second withdrawn, or we got to vote on it.
I'd like the motion to withdraw.
Well, that's not your motion. You didn't make it and didn't second it. Mr. Seeger and Mrs. Reed got to be the ones to decide whether or not we withdraw the motion.
Fair enough.
We have a first and a second. Do we have? Mr. Nettles can't vote?
For this year, for this year only. I think we need to start new procedures with this stuff. For this year only, I am go vote in favor of spending fifteen thousand.
Oh, I was just gonna say, as a result of the discussion.
Yeah. Hey, Mrs. Beckus?
What?
Mrs. Beckus is turning to vote yes or no.
Sheila?
She's contemplating.
Oh, she's.
She's contemplating.
Oh, oh, oh. Thought you didn't hear.
I think I'm gonna vote no.
I will support her. I asked, and I would like to vote no and request that my word be put that I'm not voting no to give the Chamber any money. I just wanted to have a little more time to discuss it as a as a tabulated group of people all giving nonprofits our money to in the nonprofit fund this year. So no.
Well, I guess the ball falls on my court, and I'm all for what everybody's agreeing on on both sides, but I guess I get to make the final decision tonight. And I'm all for saving the money to make sure, because we agree with you that we've gotta save our money for the ball fields, but also I agree that we got to promote our town and especially during this pandemic of needing activity out there, and we've already given them the money. I vote that we pass and give them money and have Freedom Fest. I carry my motion and guess. So that's four, right?
Mm-hmm. I vote. I guess.
She seconded it. So much you carried. Give fifteen thousand dollars for Freedom Fest to the Darlington City Chamber. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Any additional information to receive from the department heads?
Yes, sir. We've got some announcements. You may have seen in your staff's information tonight that Mr. Freddie Kinsol has announced his retirement effective July seventh, twenty twenty-one. Want to thank Freddie Kinsol for the job he's done for the city for the past almost fourteen years. It's a thankless job. And we appreciate his years of service to the city and thank him and wish Freddie and Brenda well on their way out. Thank you. Thank you, Freddie. Also, we have an intern here that's been working with us for the last month or so. Her name is Macy Schaefer, and she's a history major from Cochrane University, I believe with a minor in Chinese Studies. So she's been a delight to work with. As I say, she's completely too much enthusiastic and brings too much energy in whenever she comes in, so it's nice to have a bright, smiling face in the office. And she's been working with different departments, and she'll make the rounds to work with other folks to learn more about musical development. But thanks for coming to the meeting tonight.
Lee, I just wanna give an update on the e-gaming room. We're about finished with it and getting ready to start registration. Hopefully by the end of this month, we'll be registering for e-gaming. The plan is to offer it to city residents first. Just because it is city of Darlington equipment and everything, so city residents, that has proved their city resident, register for e-gaming and start with. We have just about finished the room. The guys from Out of This World are gonna come wrap the room next week. It's a little bit behind.
Rephrase that.
Oh, Mayor Boyd.
Yeah.
Is going around the room for us. He's donated that to the gaming room. And it is, I can't wait to see it up on the wall. It's gonna be awesome. We've worked well with Sheila. She's helped out putting the stuff up. Guys at A T N of Asset Technologies, they've chipped in. We just got a little bit of finishing touches to do, and we'll be in the e-gaming business here shortly.
Is there a charge for them to sign up for the?
There's gonna be a charge. We're going along the lines of what Fox County does. It's gonna probably be thirty dollars a person, but we're also getting ready to send out our letters for sponsorships. So you'll be able, the jerseys that they wear, it's gonna look like a kind of, I can't tell you exactly if you've seen the Bass Fisherman or something along that lines. They'll be sublimated into the jersey, the sponsors will. We're also gonna offer sponsorships on the computer screens, at the desks, for the chairs, all that stuff, just to help offset the cost of what these people venture into.
That thirty dollars, is that a one, once a year fee? The thirty dollars?
That's a once a session fee, so once that season for e-gaming is over with, you'd have to sign up again.
How long was the season?
Typically about two months. It's just like, you gotta think about it just like a sport. Because we'll do a schedule. They'll come in, they'll practice. We'll do a schedule, and they'll play other teams. Once we get good.
Play.
That's, yeah, that's all we got on the e-gaming. We're really excited about that. It's something brand new. There's only one other recreation department in the area doing it, and they've been a great help. Fox County has done a lot to help us out. We traditional, we're allowed in the last week of baseball registration. We've got around a hundred kids signed up already. Last day's Friday. Get in and get them signed up if you haven't signed them up yet.
What's the normal amount? You normally have?
About two hundred. Two, two fifty. No, it's last week. It's last week of registration. We're allowed to get a hundred fifty kids on Friday, so who knows? But people are still a little bit worried. We still seeing that as far as the pandemic goes. Basketball numbers were down everywhere, not just in Darlington, everywhere. Just talking to the neighbor and see these baseball numbers are down here and there. I mean, some places are maintaining. But nobody's got two hundred fifty kids out right now, so. That I've talked to.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Sheila?
Sir?
You were gonna, I had asked about possibly subbing out the houses being torn down. Is there anything, any updates on that or?
I'm getting information. I'm getting information together. I'll have an update for you and talk to you about it this week.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussions on that? Come in, babe. Any comments for the council?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Mrs. Beckus.
Alex, can you do something on about the holes on Ross and Second Street? I think six months ago, you filled it in with gravel or something, and now it doesn't even work. So can you check that tomorrow or the next video?
You say Ross and Second?
On the corner of Ross and Second Street.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at it. I know we had a collapse over there the other day.
We're having a problem with those trucks going through there. That's what's tearing it up, going in Dixie cup.
We'll look at it, but we're, we've got, we were planning on doing training and putting hot box in service this week. But the two companies that we buy from, Kyle Mutter and C R Jackson, they're actually down this week. They're not producing asphalt, so we're gonna buy asphalt next week. We've got training scheduled for next Thursday, I believe it is, next Wednesday or Thursday. So we're getting, compiling a list now to kind of put it in areas so we know where we need to start so we can get some holes fixed. So once we get the hot box out, we'll put asphalt in. But I'll look at as far as rocks tomorrow, and then hopefully next week, in the next week or two, we can go ahead and put asphalt in and fix it.
Okay, thank you. And I need an update on the lift stations, Howard.
Which lift station? Are you talking about the E D A Rio grant or are you talking about Farm and Allen Street?
Both of them.
The title for the E D A Rio grant, the title search has been completed. It has found that the city of Darlington does own the Hammond Street Station. All that information's been forwarded to E D A. As soon as they approve the bid documents, we'll put the lift station project out to bid. The surveys are being done by the PG Council of Government for Farm and Allen Streets. They've already contacted the housing authority to get information from the hundred and two residents that they have in that area. They're gonna be going door to door starting Thursday and Friday this week for the C D V G grant for Farm and Allen Street lift stations.
Thank you.
My only comment that I was gonna make is I know we're starting to get into the budget time of the year, assuming Howard and his departments are getting that information together.
We met in the middle of February, and I gave council members, I'm sorry, department heads their budget sheets. We're meeting again next Monday, not only to go over the budget sheets that are supposed to turn back in, but to meet with the council governments and do the long-range plan.
So I would simply ask that as we are having things come up as members of council that we need to bring to Howard's attention that let's just bear in mind that this is gonna be a busy time of the year for him. So to the extent that we can call him and set up meetings with him and so he can kind of budget his time as he's budgeting for the city, I think that would help him as he's getting his work done, just for us to bear in mind all the time constraints that he's under in connection with getting us the budget information so that we try not to interrupt him too much while he's in the process of doing something.
Mr. Kinsol, was there an update on the, when they're gonna pay the end of Broad Street? I know they're still waiting for rain and all that, but.
It's, I drove through it today. It's still sunny.
All right. Council, if you will, send me. I'm trying to compile the list to help Alex out. We have a list of about, what was it, about thirty or more places of potholes that we posted out. People have sent us. Trying to make sure that we get all these, all the spots that are with the hot blocks that we can take care of, and he can compile a list and order of where to go to take care of your things. So again, you can take it to me, and then I'll put it on the list for Alex to help him out. So where next week he can start a clean process of trying to get all these holes and spots in the city taken care of. Again, I posted it on Facebook the other day. I got two hundred fifty-three shares or more on it where the people were excited about trying to make sure they seen something happen on it. And I'd like to try to keep to that promise of that it'll be taken care of, and appreciate the sanitation department working on that really hard. So this, we have a collapse on Broad Street, another collapse on Broad Street. They're gonna start working on those, I believe. Hoping that's just a junction, where was it? What'd you call it, Alex?
It's in line with the tap.
Tap. Hoping it's just a tap. So we'll find out on that also, hopefully. That won't be a large issue. All right, so we are on it. I appreciate that everybody in the city working hard and helping us out to make sure that our camp is beautiful and taken care of, and we're gonna get these substations and lift stations fixed so that we can take care of our issues in a timely manner. All right, so we can stay at our word. All right, any further discussions? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn for tonight? Hold? Okay, reminders, it's Tuesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the monthly meeting for Darlington City Council at six thirty will be our next city council meeting. Okay? Go ahead. We're off Good Friday for April the second. Okay, city offices will be closed April the second for Good Friday for two thousand twenty-one. And I think that's all our reminders. Okay, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor?